My Board cannot comment. But we would be pleased to hear your comments.
Nice to see you trustees. As you know, I'm Rob Schneiderman. I'm the president of the Faculty Union. And as you're aware, the Faculty Union is interested in creating the best learning environment in Orange County for all students regardless of their beliefs. Tonight, the Republican Party of Orange County is asking the Board of Trustees to enact four items. They're asking to amend policies to protect students from discrimination as a result of their political affiliation. The Coast Federation of Teachers is against any form of discrimination. And it's important to note, though, that harsh criticism of a politician is not, I repeat, that is not discrimination. Previous generations of Americans were storming the beaches of Normandy at age 18, facing certain death. This current generation can certainly listen to political statements they disagree with and not claim that those statements are discrimination.
I have to ask the audience, please not to interrupt the speaker. And if you do, we may not continue.
The whole idea of expanding government policies to include political party as a protected class of citizens seems like big government nanny state solutions that invite lawsuits and regulation. And frankly, I find it shocking that the Republican Party is advocating such a big government position. The second thing that you're going to be asked tonight is to provide students with the ability to report faculty, staff, and other students for violating policies. Well, the Coast District currently has such policies. We believe that this whole chaotic incident would have been completely avoided had students simply followed the existing board policies. It doesn't appear, however, that the Republican Club of Orange Coast College or the Republican Party of Orange County had any interest in resolving these issues through the existing policies. Finally, the demand that the Republican Party from Orange County, what they really care about is they want Olga Perez-Stable Cox not to receive an award which honors her for her 40-plus years of service to students. The Republican Party of Orange County is trying to override a representative democratic process because they disagree with the political beliefs of the award winner. I think the Republican Party of Orange County should follow their national organization. The RNC says, "For the good of the country, Democrats must stop their cynical attempts to undermine the legitimacy of the election." For the good of the college, out of respect for the democratic process, I say to the Republican Party of Orange County, elections have consequences. And Olga Perez-Stable Cox won this award through the process, and respect that process.
Please do not interrupt the speaker.
Tonight, they'll repeat a false story that Professor Cox told students to stand and be identified as Trump supporters. We know that this is a false story. The district has investigated this claim, and we know it is untrue. Anyone repeating this alternative fact this evening will be perpetuating a lie. The community needs to stand up and take these extremist views away from this body. And we need to reclaim our institutions in order to strengthen our democracy and create a more civil society. Thank you very much.
I would like to remind everyone that we really do need to do just that. We need to be civil to one another. We need to be civil.
Good afternoon trustees. I'm Lee Gordon. I'm the president of the Academic Senate at Orange Coast College, and I'd like to talk about the process whereby we select the colleague of the year. The Orange Coast College Outstanding Colleague of the Year Award has been around since 1990. Here is the selection process. The nominees are submitted by the college community, and any student or employee can nominate. The selection process for classified colleague of the year and faculty colleague of the year is a campus process. Raters from constituent groups include past title holders, the classified senate, the academic senate, and a student volunteer appointed by the Associated Students of Orange Coast College. They all participate in the selection process for classified colleague of the year and for faculty colleague of the year. The selection for classified colleague of the year and faculty colleague of the year is determined by the highest scoring nominee in each of the categories using an established rubric. Any current employee who is a full-time faculty member or a part-time faculty member has a chance to be nominated. Olga Perez-Stable Cox was selected in the category of full-time faculty member. She has accepted the Coast Colleague of the Year recognition, and this is a settled matter. Thank you.
I appreciate your signs, but if you could kind of keep your signs down a little bit more back than you can.
Awesome. Thank you trustees for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Joshua Recalde Martinez, and I am a constituent and student within the district. And I apologize for my voice. I'm suffering a little bit of a cold. I come before you today to express my want for and support of changes to be made to AP 5500, BP 3410, and AP 3515. I am requesting that in AP 5500's anti-discrimination statement, BP 3410 Paragraph 2, and AP 3515 Bullet Point 6, that an amendment be made to include the phrase "political affiliation and ideological beliefs" as things which the district will protect against unlawful discrimination. I am calling for this extended protection to assure all students, no matter whether they are Republican or Democrat, conservative or progressive, be protected from being discriminated against by faculty, staff, and fellow students. Taking these measures will ensure a college district which truly values the diverse population of its student body and that ensures equity for all students. This is not a left or right issue. This is a common sense solution to a problem which springs from extremists' partisan feelings from either side of the political spectrum against the other. And sadly, those who advocate against these amendments seek only to further discrimination on college campuses throughout the district. I am here to also request the Board direct the IT staff to create a readily accessible and very visible reporting and complaint submission button. One of the reasons why the issue with Caleb was perhaps not handled properly is because many students, including myself, aren't aware of proper policies that are in place to deal with such matters. Without that person's knowledge, I'm sorry, to allow students to report rapidly, directly, and even somewhat anonymously to district and campus officials. The current system we have in place for students to report student code of conduct violations and complaints regarding faculty and staff are cumbersome and confusing. If faculty and staff can have a button to report students who they suspect violate the student code of conduct, then why can't students have the same on their home pages? And additionally, have a resource which they can express complaints about faculty and staff to the appropriate officials. With respect to the student code of conduct, I would also like to ask that Section 43 be amended to read, "Recording using any electronic device, any person on district property or at any district function without that person's knowledge or consent is prohibited." This definition shall not apply to recording conducted in a public, in a commonly recognized public forum, and this code violation shall not apply in cases where a student may be documenting a perceived violation of the student code of conduct and/or a perceived violation of local, state, and/or federal laws or board policies. So this policy will allow students to document and record misconduct without fear of retaliation and prevent future mass media coverage like that which has continued since the Olga incident last semester. Additionally, I am calling for Section 46 of the Student Code of Conduct to be removed as it can be arbitrarily applied and loosely interpreted and unfairly exercised against the students of the district. Lastly, I come before you to inform you of the decision by a minority of faculty and staff members at Orange Coast College to nominate Professor Cox for the faculty full-time colleague of the year award. This decision was not only insensitive of the campus climate but completely disrespectful, especially to this Board and your wishes for the controversy surrounding Ms. Cox to cease so we can begin a healing process. Numerous students and community members are opposed to this decision, and I come before you today with members of the community to ask that you provide a statement denouncing the decision of this minority of campus officials and calling for a campus-wide election by the faculty to select a nominee who is truly deserving of the award. A faculty member of the year should be someone which supports all students, not just some, and which upholds the value of Orange Coast College, which Olga did not, didn't, by failing to recognize the diverse student population within her human sexuality class last semester. Additionally, I would like to say that I recently found out that the Coast Report Editorial Board is also siding with us on this issue, so I'm very pleased about that. And I would like to thank you so much for your time, and I hope to see action on this.
Julian Delaoe, Vincent Wetzel, and Robert Lowton, if you could come up.
Oh, hello. Anna, excuse me, because I always get nervous in these. So, my name is Julian Delaoe. Just a quick introduction of myself. I came from Mexico City when I was one year old, three months, and my family and I left Mexico because we find here in the United States something we don't find in Mexico, and it's opportunity. And something that my parents wanted for me and my brothers, where they'll be able to come to this country to receive a better education, because at least it is known that here in the United States, colleges are educating people. And in part of educating, people are allowed to express their ideas. And I don't believe colleges, universities, should have professors who oppress minorities in the classrooms. That is unacceptable. For example, I don't want to argue against, but the first speaker that came up here said that he's against discrimination. Yet however, if the professor would have said something like, "Jesus Christ is Lord", would you, he had come up here and said the same thing, but there's bias on our campuses, and it has to stop. Also, I come and speak to you guys as a friend of you guys. I'm a student at a college, and I've developed a deep love for this country, and I really, really would despise to see this country begin to look like other countries where the public are one way or another oppressed. To me, I don't know how to state it exactly, but it's heartbreaking for me to see my classmates, I will call them, or colleagues at Orange Coast College being called terrorists because they voted for somebody that didn't agree with the professor's views. And I just, the purpose of me coming here is just to encourage you guys to take action against that, because colleges should be a place where everybody is free to express their ideas and attack ideas, not the people. Always attack the ideas. And what the professor did was attack the people, and that was unacceptable. Yes, she has a right to express her views, to say what she believes in, but I don't believe she has a right to bully, because actually, that's the correct word to use there, bully the students. She's a professor bullying her students, and that's unacceptable. And well, just in conclusion, again, my name is Julian. I'm calling the Board to action, and I know you guys can't comment, but if you guys need anything from me, I study at Santana College, and I'm at your guys' service. God bless you, and God bless the United States of America. Thank you.
So, under Board Policy 2350, given with public speakers, there's a 20-minute limit on any particular topic, and 20 minutes has just about been reached. But the Board, by vote, could vote to extend that for an indefinite period of time or for a certain period of time, or to the ability to vote of the Board if it's 20 minutes.
Mr. President, I would like to extend the public comment time for an additional 20 minutes.
Show the time for the speakers.
Oh, no. No, I want my five minutes, please. And starting, just to introduce myself, my name is Vincent Wetzel. I am the president of Orange Coast College Republicans. For starters, I'd just like to say that our club would like to offer its full support to the various reform measures that Josh listed earlier. I'd also like to address the comments made by Lee Gordon, the president of the Academic Senate. Thank you for explaining some of the process that's involved with selecting faculty member of the year. However, you didn't give us names, and as we've been in touch with the school's PR guy, Doug Bennett, and he says that we're not going to get names unless we go through with the California Public Records Request. That is something we are going to do, because every single member of that committee deserves to be held accountable for that vote. It is completely inexcusable. Moving on, the job of the Board is to defend the rights of all minority students on their campus. And I come from a special place because I am essentially a walking intersectionality. I am the most minority student on our campus. BuzzFeed has a privilege test. I score a low 20 out of 100. I am gay, I am Hispanic, I am in a low-income household with a single mother, I'm a religious minority, I am all the minorities. And I will tell you that through my life, I've never been discriminated against for any of those minority statuses the way that we are discriminated against on this campus for being Republican. Speaking of being gay, I noticed that there's a lot of gay Republicans here. I just wanted to give a little shout out to them. Yes, Olga, we do exist. Thank you. But yes, we're very much targeted members of our campus. It's not just that Olga was targeting us, you know, calling the election an act of terror, saying that Mike Pence is one of the most anti-gay humans in our country, saying that Donald Trump is a white supremacist, saying that the people of Orange County are just so hateful. You know, if it was just Olga, that would be one thing, but it's not that. It's also the Coast Report has written many very, very unfair articles about us. The faculty here really hate us for asking them to adhere to a standard of professionalism, like, you know, not asking your students to stand up and identify themselves at the class based off their political affiliation. There have been other clubs which have basically rallied against us and are shunning us and shaming us just for being Republican. There's been a graffiti incident on our campus which involved death threats and a lot of unsavory language directed at our club. And aside from that, there has been additional death threats issued against members of our club. This is completely unacceptable, but this is making the point, Republicans are the most targeted minority on our campus, and it's the duty of this Board to defend minority students. In addition, I feel like specifically I want to be targeting faculty members here because it's not just that Olga did something wrong. It's that the faculty has decided to make Professor Olga Perez-Stable Cox faculty member of the year. This is completely inexcusable. And what really grinds my gears about this is that a few days before this decision was released, I went before Academic Senate, and I told them specifically, "We have a very negative environment on our campus. Everything has been incredibly hostile and negative ever since the election happened. Can we please have that coming together as an American family that is supposed to come after elections?" Instead of doing that, this faculty decided to take possibly the most divisive action that they could have taken, and just as a massive screw you to the Republican Club, nominated Professor Cox to receive this award. It is completely inexcusable. My club is trying to work towards peace on our campus, and we do not feel like the faculty is supporting us in any way in this pursuit. The final thing that I wanted to bring up is that this has essentially created a divide on our campus between students and local community members who showed up in large numbers today, thank you all for coming, between those individuals and the administration, the union, and the faculty. And so specifically, there's one rotten egg who's kind of leading this, and that's the head of the union, Rob Schneiderman, who has decided to show his disreputable face here today. Rob is actually trying to run for Mimi Walters's seat, and I just want to say, Rob, based off of your support of Professor Cox throughout this entire incident, there is no way you are going to win that seat, because our club is going to do everything to oppose you. Thank you.
I'm Robert Lowton from We the People Rising. Olga, the Teacher of the Year Award recipient, should retire. Any student of your campus that was so upset with Donald Trump's election victory that they needed psychological counseling should get their money back if they took a political science course from any of your campuses. There were clues in the presidential primary that signaled Donald Trump's election in November. For those that were not clueless, the clues were the open primaries in the presidential election. Open primary means that your party registration does not matter. There were many open primaries. In fact, Donald Trump won all of the open primaries, when Democrats could say, "No, I'm not voting for Bernie Sanders, and I'm not voting for Hillary Clinton. I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for Donald Trump." And if you like the list of the open primaries, I followed it from Real Clear Politics, and Donald Trump won all of the open primaries except for one that was won by Kasich of Ohio. And so, 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 so students of yours are being short-changed if they're a political science teacher wasn't following the primary schedule. You know, some primaries were closed, where only Democrats could vote in the Democrat candidates, and Republicans could only vote for the Republican candidates. But some were open primaries, where your party registration did not matter. And when Democrats and those that were re-registered as independent or no party preference choose to vote for Donald Trump, that should signal, that should have signaled a clue to those that were not clueless that Hillary's campaign was in serious trouble. And so, this business about Olga, she is reported as saying, "Oh, it's my duty to comfort the, to the students that were so upset, you know, that they needed counseling." And then in other high schools, you know, the clueless were giving a week off so that they recover from the shock of Donald Trump's election. They were in shock because they were separated from reality. And any person that took a political science course from any of your campuses that was so upset with Donald Trump's election that you should give them their money back because you've short-changed them. What you are is, on your campuses, is this a propaganda, you know, propaganda instrument for Marxist leninism? Thank you.
Arianna Rollins, Brandon Lee, and Paula Prizio.
And you are all certainly welcome to speak. I would be helpful to not repeat one of them, and you can say very well, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak to you. You know, free speech is something that we as Republicans value very much, and it's a shame that free speech isn't valued on Orange Coast College campus. My name is Arianna Rollins. I am the immediate past president of the UC Irvine College Republicans. I am a journalist for Breitbart News and for Red Alert Politics, and I am the chairwoman for Rebuild CCR. I just wanted to come here to tell you that I think that the way that Republicans are treated on college campuses across California, but specifically at Orange Coast College, is absolutely inexcusable. I think that the environment created by having Olga Cox selected to be the faculty member of the year is one that shows Republicans that they are not wanted on Orange Coast campus and that their concerns are not going to be addressed. I think that the way that Rob Schneiderman came up here and accosted the Republican Party of Orange County by saying that we don't represent Republican values, by saying that we disapprove of something, that we're exercising our free speech to say, "No, this isn't right. No, that we don't approve of what's been happening here," is inexcusable as well. And I think it is rather funny that he's running for Mimi Walters's seat. He's probably left, but he didn't want to hear it, just like they don't want to hear the negative comments that we have to say about Olga Cox. I think that the Coast Community College District knows exactly what it's doing when it is allowing Olga Cox to remain as the Faculty Member of the Year Award. I really urge you to reconsider this, and I really urge you to understand that the most persecuted group on college campuses are the conservative students, and that is not being addressed. We're being persecuted not only by our own fellow school members, but by the faculty and administration as well. So, thank you.
Hello. My name is Paula Prizio. I have a little different take on this. When I was a young girl, I came here from Little Rock, Arkansas, and I was bullied. I had some wonderful teachers, but one teacher in particular liked to single me out. Every time I opened my mouth, this teacher would get hysterical and laugh. I really don't think she realized that she was giving students license to harass me and to threaten me. I really don't think she meant to do that, but she did. Today, I work with college and high school students all over California, conservative students, but at our meetings, we have Democrats come to the meetings. We have debates, and we debate current issues. Never, never do I tell anyone that we've got Democrats in the room, or what they are. They don't know. And by the time they get done debating, since they have to debate both positions, they have no clue as who the Democrats were anyway, and that's the way we want it. I don't make any statements. Maybe I make a couple questions, open-ended questions, not for me to make a statement, but for my students, "Well, what if?", and go to the other side. "Well, wait a minute, what about the other side?", so we can hear both positions. I was talking to Joshua after all this happened, and he had his name written through the school, and I realized he was telling me that on his way home, when it's dark at night, he runs through the parking lot to get home. And I was reminded how I had to run home from school because students thought it was okay to hurt me, because a teacher made fun of me already. And I thought of Joshua, and it broke my heart. I think that Professor Cox does not realize this, but she has given license. As for you rewarding her, you have to realize- rewarding her, you have to realize this, you are also giving approval and giving license to other students to make fun and threaten Joshua and other conservative students. Teachers have a lot of power. They really do. I've always remembered my great teachers, but the one that really is the worst is that teacher I will never forget. And believe me, I learned real quick not to ask another question again. You have the power in your hands and you have the safety of our students in your hands and I don't think you're realizing how dangerous this is in today's time. There's much more violent than what I got running home from school of the girls clicking my heels and trying to hurt me. It's much more violent today and it should not be that only your, one group of students has approval. Everyone should have the right to be safe on campus. And I'm sorry, coming from a person that was bullied, this is bullying and this is on you. Thank you so much for your time.
Good evening, Board. My name is Brandon Lee and I am also an openly gay Republican. Very happy about it. I'm very proud about it. And today, I want to actually talk about the teachers' union and what it really entitles. And there was a book that I was reading that was published in 1958 by a man named W. Cleon Skousen. And he put in his book Forty-Five Communistic Goals from the Communist Party to Take Down and Destroy the United States and the Government. And I just want to go over four of those goals that I highlighted and found interesting to me, especially in public schools. One of them is get control of the schools, use them as transmission belts for socialism and current communist propaganda, soften the curriculum, get control of teachers' associations, put the party line in textbooks, gain control of all student newspapers, use student riots to foment public protest against programs or organizations which are under communism attack, infiltrate the press, get control of book reviews, assignments, editorial writings, policymaking positions, gain control of key positions in radio, television and motion The majority of professors and teachers at colleges do not belong teaching students in classrooms. They themselves create a very hostile environment. What professors promote is their own agenda and what they say is always right and what they have to say is the final word. There is no discussion, there is no debate. How dare you think differently than what your teacher wants you to think? How dare you have different ways to think? The teacher has a degree, so they must know more than the student. You do not have the right to think freely. Your freedom of speech is not important. If you don't think, act or speak or present yourself as the teacher wants you to, then in their eyes, you are the teacher's enemy. Many teachers and professors' goals, not only in college, it is sad to say, but it starts in elementary school, it is to indoctrinate on a communist thinking agenda and to teach children to think like anarchists and fascists. If you are not a Democrat or a liberal, freedom of speech is non-existent on college campus. Let me just make one point. If sticking up for your country and fighting for what is right versus what is wrong, if you have patriotism in your heart and you believe in America first, if that labels you a racist, then they can call me whatever they want. I don't care. Those that bark the loudest usually have no bite. With a new generation of Republican youth being born, the Democrats and liberals are only going to get more loud and more violent. Republicans cannot and must not sit down and daydream their problems away. It is sad to say, but we cannot unite, the Republicans and the Democrats, we cannot unite for the good of our country. It's just not going to happen. But we must fight to save this country. They're willing to commit violence, perhaps somewhere down the line, even murder. My country is calling me and I will answer. What will you do? Teachers with tenure letting refugees in that don't even speak English. I will tell you who the real threat to education is, is the teachers' unions. Did you know in rural high schools, it is, it is, in rural high schools is having its fundings cut because there are too many black students? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. That was wrong. No one would stand for that and no one would support that if that would happen. But the truth is, is just, the truth is just as bad. It's happening in LA Unified School District. They're cutting funding to a school that has too many white kids. Since the 1970s, LA has provided bonus funding to any schools that is at least 70% non-white. Hence the fact that almost every school you go to looks like a school straight from Mexico. Waltry Middle School in North Hollywood recently added some white kids, dropping it just below the threshold. So now it's losing a bunch of money. But I wonder, if they were to base this on any other race, what would the very first word that come out of the Board of Education's mouths or the liberals? It would be racism.
Last 20 seconds, please.
Thank you. The Board of Education and the teachers' unions have declared war on white kids. They also have declared war on any of, anyone who thinks or speaks out differently than what they want you to say or think. The teachers and board members need to publicly be shamed. The tenure rule needs to be demolished. If possible, somewhere down the line, the teachers' union needs to be taken away and many teachers need to have their license revoked. Thank you.
Trustee Grant, that's been just almost 20 minutes again, so it would require another four.
Please, please, we have a lot to say.
You know, maybe if you cut it down to two minutes per speaker instead of five, it'll move it along a little faster.
That's not our policy, actually. Do I have that? How many speakers do we have left?
We have like 25 more speakers.
So if you break it down to two minutes each.
Yes, you can regulate your own time. If you want to stop earlier, then that's the way to do it.
Mr. President, I believe we have to have a motion to extend the time. I would likely extend for an additional 20 minutes and if we haven't covered all the speakers, we do have time for a public comment at the end of the meeting and we can continue the public comment then, if that's acceptable to the Board.
I would second that with self-regulation.
I just wanted to say, 25 people want to speak. And I'd like to cut their one to two minutes. I would support the motion to go for another 50 minutes, two minutes after our self.
Trustee Grant, the Board policy doesn't provide for, doesn't provide for that.
Why don't we stick to the 20 minutes then and let people self-regulate? All right.
Okay. Hakeem Siddiqui, Gary Hickman and Kimo Gandol.
Hi, thank you for your time. Yeah, I'm just going to say Teacher of the Year to put this in perspective. I would like to start off by addressing the matter of only 10 faculty members deciding which teacher receives the Teacher of the Year Award. I do not see how only 10 faculty members could be the gatekeepers with a wide range of knowledge on who truly deserves that award. If this system existed for the purpose of preventing Marb rule, this would have been one of the worst executions of a division of power that I had ever seen. The Teacher of the Year should be nominated by votes from all professors in the school instead of only 10 faculty members being the gatekeepers of an award that I find to be very prestigious and impactful on a teacher's career recognition. This Teacher of the Year Award is obviously meant to recognize a teacher's performance as an instructor, but in this case, that is not true. This award does not reflect Mrs. Cox's performance as a teacher. Her class is recognized for being an easy A. Her job is obviously not as difficult as the other teachers who work extremely hard to cram their students with difficult to comprehend information or the teachers who go out of their way to extremely check their students' work to find out, to find the information that is presented to be factual. Back to the teacher's performance, she applied prejudice and slandered her students based on their political affiliation. Even the president of the teachers' union refused to defend what she did in that classroom, but he somehow believes that she should get the Teacher of the Year Award, which doesn't make any sense until you know that these people are proven to be liars, which I will touch on later. If they gave her the award because they thought it would be cute or something, they should have made a totally different award for professors who made the national spotlight regardless if their performance was negatively perceived, but save this real award for an impressive performance as a teacher to the teachers with an impressive performance. For these reasons and more, I ask that you resign her Faculty Member of the Year Award. I also ask that you amend your policies to protect students from discrimination based on their political affiliation. I'm actually shocked to hear that those who aren't in place, I'm surprised, I'm actually shocked to hear that those aren't in place. I think we can get unanimous agreement from everyone that such policies should be in place. Now, I already predicted Schneiderman would do this, but I would love to hear the counter argument for what I have specifically said and not have the argument be turned towards another direction because it was Republicans who proposed the amending. Now, I've brought this up to you twice and I'm here again for this reason. That reason is that the students should be allowed to record their teachers when their teachers become abusive and essentially have the right to collect their own concrete objective evidence when the teacher is abusing their job position. The classes don't have cameras and you'll have people lie to defend the teacher when they have a stronger relationship with the teacher than they have with the student who is slandered or victimizing whichever way. The right to be able to collect your own evidence when you are being taken advantage of is common sense to everyone except apparently the union, who are established to be proven liars. For example, they strongly threaten to take legal action and now they pretend they are innocent and they have never done that. I don't see how someone would be willing to side with the proven liars over us, but these are the same people who are against us collecting our own hard evidence to defend ourselves. So that makes sense for the side that lies to have issues with collection of hard evidence. I ask for you to ensure that students will have the right to collect their own evidence when their teacher is overstepping their position and abusing them within their classroom. I am also curious to find out if Ms. Cox was pushing for the student to be punished. I am curious to find out if she wanted to take advantage of our government to crush this innocent student. Thank you for your time.
I appreciate the opportunity to talk to the trustees, staff, administration. I'm feeling tremendously outnumbered at this time, what the heck. My understanding of the trustees' position and activity is to set policy, guideline. Gary Hickman? I'm sorry, I'm trying to speed myself up. I am an adjunct instructor. The kids call me a professor. I'm still trying to learn to live with that term, but at any rate, I teach a business law course. And I wanted to share kind of a policy issuer question with you, something I share with my class the first session of every semester. In my class, I not only expect discussion, I want discussion, I want debate and I love disagreements. I enjoy disagreement in the classroom. Why? Because when people pick up factoids, they don't understand it until they defend it, talk about it, try to educate someone or try to persuade them. You don't learn by just plugging in facts. You learn by getting the concepts in your head, debating them and working with them. I believe that. So I tell my students every semester, "I want disagreement in this class, but, but we have some rules. We treat each other with respect, we don't call each other bad names, we don't use foul language and we stay on the topic." I was about to say sadly, I think that has been breached a couple times this evening, but I think that is the way we educate people, is opening that door. Had you been in my class this afternoon while we were going over a quiz, you would have thought a third of my students were ready to take me out the door, string me up on a lamppost, you know, with pitchforks and firebrands and stuff in their hands, which, to tell you the truth, I loved it. We got one of the best debates going we've had all semester. So what I'm going to suggest is if you're setting a policy to prevent discrimination, fine, but where do you draw the line between discrimination and disagreement? In constitutional law, we call that a chilling effect. So whatever you're doing, you have to recognize the consequences may go to the point that you stifle not only discrimination, but good old fashioned, honest, passionate debate. That's all I have. Thank you.
Hello, yes, thank you. Hello, my name's Kimo Gandol. I'm the vice president of the UC Irvine College Republicans and I'm really going to put things very simply. I've been raised that way, I'm Hawaiian, so we just make everything simple and I'm going to put it simply for you because everyone else already gave the facts, right? There's an argument on facts, we're going to get to that later. So let's just talk about such behavior, right? Now walk into a class and tell me that people still have any trust in their teachers, any at all.
We have to shout.
Yeah, I understand that, Mr. Trustee. Yeah, yeah, we got some old people here, we gotta help out people, Mr. Trustee, all right. Let's, let's just continue on this then, let's have some free speech, as we call it. All right. So the first issue and what a lot of empirical evidence shows, if you see people like Robert Puntner, right? He wrote a book on social capital, that's to do with trust between individuals. The problem is when you create artificial barriers, like what the Board wants to do now, creating an artificial barrier where you're saying it is okay for a teacher in a class that has nothing to do with politics, right? Besides the weird gender thing, there's nothing to do with politics in her class, yet you expect students to debate politics in a class that has nothing to do with it. And there's already plenty of evidence showing that that creates substantial harms to the students. And how does that manifest? Well, simply put, it manifests as partisanship. That is a problem. Partisanship, most simply put, occurs when people can't talk to each other because their politics are that decisive. Let's look at this simply. It's called the Law of Group Polarization. John Olin from the University of Chicago in 2000 found that when placing individuals in groups, they disproportionately advocated for incorrect facts, even when those facts were blatantly incorrect. More specifically, when they were independent individuals, they only erred 1% of the time from basic questions. When they were putting groups, groups that advocated for incorrect answers to basic math questions, they erred 36.1% of the time. Now what does that tell you? Most simply, it tells you that Ms. Cox, the teacher, is putting people into groups and it's stifling debate because no longer are they in, let's just say, groups that can talk to each other, but they're in groups now that follow this blatant ideological path that can no longer make any firm or correct decisions. And that is simply empirically proven in every case and we've known that for a long time, right? Republicans and Democrats can't talk anymore. That's a really serious problem. And let's just talk about perception now. I thought UCI had a bad perception as being a liberal school, right? I walk in and I see my Latin professor basically equivalent socialism with abolitionism. Like what, what type of logic is that? That's basically saying the Republicans are slaveholders. And UCI has a better perception than Orange Coast College does right now. That is a problem. And the reason is, is because not only does it look like you're stifling free speech, but it also looks like you're forcing a student, Caleb, you're forcing him, or what you wanted to do at least originally, to write a letter apologizing for calling someone out. That's a problem, but apparently the students, the teachers' union doesn't think so. They claim, "Oh, man up a little, you know, our soldiers wouldn't did it before." I mean, who hired the militist in the group? The same guy is the guy who wants us to, I don't know, talk about genders and stuff like that in math classes. That is a problem. That's where, that's where we come into the political correctness problem and I have no problem with debate as long as it's debate in an appropriate location, but no longer is debate in an appropriate location. Debate has become part of the liberal agenda to perpetuate not only in politics classes, but in STEM. And that's a problem because no longer are people learning, they're just learning an agenda perpetuated by the Democrat Party. And then he also calls us a liar. That's a really interesting thing. Then, "Mr. Union Man," and I'm talking to you right now, "all the teachers' unions, bring us to court because most simply, you will lose on perjury because it is a lie to come out and slander Mr. Caleb who's clearly given a clear narrative." That is perjury and I'd love for you to go in front of a court. Maybe we can haul you off to jail along with the other people who have lied, who have perpetuated a false story and slander. Now finally.
Do you have 30 seconds?
Yes, yes, I can see the clock. Most importantly, Mr. Speaker, and most importantly, honorable trustees, it's the fact that violence and backlash is beginning to arise out of this. Let's look at Berkeley. It's a very similar instance to what's happening in Orange County right now. Antifa, they come in their black masks, right, totally innocent, and they commit violent actions. You saw at the Trump parade, we see that. Now, we start perpetuating against conservative students and all Ms. Cox has done is provide a license. You already heard testimony from someone who'd been bullied their entire life because they're conservative. And I ask you this now, if you- And I ask you this now, if you really care about students, then you're going to turn down this proposal and protect the people of Orange County. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Panagiotis Frosiakis, I attend Orange Coast College, I'm a proud student there. I am the communications director of the Orange Coast College Republicans. Thank you for having me tonight, and thank you everybody who attended this evening. Now, in my job of, as being communication director, I speak to honestly thousands and thousands of constituents of yours throughout Orange County. And in doing so, I have been able to notice, quite simply and quite frankly, that many individuals have expressed massive concern lately with what has been going on on our college campuses. When it comes down to individuals, especially politically affiliated conservatives on our campuses, they're feeling very threatened. The taxpayers are not happy, and I mean, it's very simple to see even from tonight. There are many individuals that you are supposed to be representing that do not feel that enough has been taken, not enough action has been taken, and that has to change. So I want to reaffirm the main purpose of myself and my associates coming here tonight, and that is we are asking for you to push forward an amendment process in which we are now able to associate all students and so that they can be protected under political affiliation. So no longer will they feel discriminated based on their political affiliation. You have the opportunity here, ladies and gentlemen, to become part of a new American chapter in our history, where students on American campuses will now be able to be protected from ideological discrimination. And it begins by not fueling the flames any further. We've heard many speakers come up and express their anger, their discontent, and that's largely because of how it has been portrayed, because we've had situations such as with the Mr. O'Neill coincidence or event that occurred, and we've had events where conservative students have not felt safe on the college campuses. And so what needs to be done is this amendment process has to be pushed forward. Additionally, Olga Cox should not receive her award, very simply, because you already made a ruling in terms of her not having to, with the whole Mr. O'Neill situation. So her now receiving the faculty member of the year award, even if you do not directly, I know, I understand the argument that you don't directly control that, but you should at least be able to condemn it or make some kind of move against that, because I know the people of Orange County, I speak to them online, I speak to them through Facebook, the people are against this, they are against the Olga Cox situation, and honestly, the people want there to be action taken, she does not deserve that award. I know that that very first speaker came up here, he brought up his whole, his whole point on, that he had to defend the unions and everything, he brought all that up. I mean, I have to give him some credit, because that is a difficult position to take when the entire county is against you. It really is. And so, that's the, that's the whole problem here. I speak, I see emails after emails after emails every day, and people are saying, how can we help you, Orange Coast College Republicans? How can we donate to you? How can we support you? Because what is going on currently is unacceptable. It absolutely is. And so there are so many individuals, so many taxpayers, so many hardworking Americans in our great county, that want to see you take some action. And so we're providing you an example, how to do that. Pass the amendment process, defend American students, and defend those on our campuses, specifically in like Orange Coast College, Golden West, coastline community, for them to be protected against ideological discrimination. Make it feel that their tuition, that what they're giving into the system is truly the best experience, and that is what you stand for as trustees. You want to be able to provide the greatest experience to all students within this district. The best way to do that is to take the course of action that we have suggested to you. And in doing so, you are going to be able to show that you do care about the constituents, that you are willing to take action, and that you do have the best interest in mind of the community. Thank you very much, and God bless America.
And first of all, I'd like to say I'm not an old person, I'm a senior citizen, as someone put out there. Okay? My name is Vaughn, and I'm a member of We Do People Rising. One of the board trustees mentioned this is democracy, well, it's not, it's a republic. And I find it a total disgrace when our First Amendment rights are being squelched by a troubled professor who fears open and free discussion. Remember back in the 60s, the revolution arrived? Oh, this is not what America is all about, especially in the institution of learning. Professor Olga Stable Cox has most likely flung down a policy side, one of one. She used to stay on course with the human sexuality course. The faculty member of the year, you gotta be kidding me. Thank you very much.
You know, a college campus ought to be the epitome of a place for open discussion and free speech. I would think the teacher of the year ought to be the one that most successfully promotes spirited and calm debate on an issue, promotes both sides, makes sure both sides are there, and even encourages it, all without letting anybody in the room know what their personal belief is on the issue. And with that in mind, I would nominate Mr. Hickman, I think his name was over here, who talked about the spirited argument in his class this afternoon, provided, when it was all over, nobody knew what his personal views were on that issue.
It says here that, uh, my name is Mike Hunt, I'm a concerned citizen. It says here, the fake news media, the LA Times, or the New York Times, NBC News, ABC News, CBS News, CNN, is not my enemy. This is Donald Trump. It is the enemy of the American people. And that's what Donald Trump said, and I, like, I was gonna say something else, but when I started reading this rag, you guys, this newspaper, The Coast Report, this is nothing but a rag, and it's a disgrace. And this is fake news, you should call this fake news. And another thing I'd like to say, I'm gonna make it short and sweet, I would like to suggest a resolution to all of you people, that there be a rigorous psychiatric evaluation of all faculty at this college, because you look like a bunch of nuts. Thank you.
So at the end of the next 20 minute period...
So much for sort of regulating. I think we have probably, have we heard essentially everyone's sense of things?
I have a personal email I just received from the board of trustees, I think it's critical to see.
Ma'am?
Could I come up here and speak?
No. If you want, I encourage you can. All I'm trying to do is, is so we don't repeat each other, I know he really has a comment to make, and we can sit here and tell midnight if we want, but it's, I think we all get the picture that you have pages.
I don't think you do.
We appreciate your time.
If I could move this along, I move one last 20 minute extension. If you could please remember that there are other people waiting to speak, and then...
Thank you.
All right, is that acceptable to anybody? All right.
Trustee, all right, so there was a motion, was there a second, and was there a vote?
There's a second, there's a favor, all board members, you're in favor?
I'll support the motion, but what I'm concerned about is, we have 20 minutes limit to a subject, but we can repeat it over a number of times. We had a gift given to us here, two minutes per person for 25 people, and I don't understand what general counsel says that we can't adopt that, I mean, so here we go for another 20 minutes, and then if everybody hasn't spoken...
Board members, if you agree, we're here, then. And if you can, if you could, if you're willing to repeat your comments, so we, more people to speak, in 20 minutes, people will be most satisfied. Is that right?
Two minutes.
Thanks, please. Sure.
Yeah, since there is a five minute rule, I would suggest that we just waive that rule and make it two minutes.
I think our attorney is smart, but we cannot do that.
Yeah, my suggestion would be that, if you could, when you come up to speak, if you could make a new point and not repeat what we've already heard. We're listening to you very carefully, taking notes, so, yeah, just, don't repeat, thank you.
We're trying to be fair.
You guys already spent like five minutes deciding, we can add two people up there by the time you guys were talking.
We're just asking to be fair, all right? Here we go. Okay, who are the next three?
Let's get it going, come on.
Who are the next three?
Okay, Glenn Brooks, Robert F. Troyson, and Jan Gorison.
Mr. Trustee and the board, thank you very much. I appeared back in January, I suppose it was, I counted 16 points of litigation on that agenda, and I count 18 today. There's something's really messed up, and as I said back then, this teacher Cox is a flashpoint for problems. I'll try and keep this short, because there's a lot of people who want to speak, and they all have very good points. I am so proud of what I have heard come out of, especially the young people here, and you guys are safeguarding these intellectual resources, and this lady, Cox, is a bully, and she's vulgar. And I heard somebody talk about licensing these students to attack other people, that's exactly what she's done. You guys are gonna stand by and let that happen? You know? I attended Orange Coast College my junior year at Edison High School, and I spent a year at Orange Coast, got a degree from Golden West, I love coastline community college, you're like my home. I've gone on and gotten plenty of other degrees, I was so ashamed to hear that OCC was this thing when I was on the East Coast. So to wrap this up, you know, she is acting under the color of authority, she's licensing the other students to model her behavior, and you guys really are the only one, you're our last hope here, except for the courts, right? We don't want to go that way. Thank you.
My name is Robert Troyson, thanks for having me. And I'm currently the chief of staff of the California College Republicans, but before that, I served as a regional vice chair of the college Republican chapters in this area, and I also used to be a chair of the UC Irvine College Republicans. And I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I hope you take heed of the words of both myself and my fellow students, both at OCC and other schools in Orange County. In recent months, we've seen some members of OCC Republicans get quite a bit of abuse on campus. We've seen an administration and union that was held back on inputting the draconian punishment on young Caleb O'Neill, and the teachers' union has also targeted and attacked different students for their political views. The tension is becoming cold by the way right now, and it is clear that something has to be done by this body to protect those students. Being a Republican college is not easy, we all know that, and stories like this have become unfortunately very commonplace over the years. However, it's one thing to see threats being made by deranged teachers or students, and there's another thing to see these kinds of problems go completely unaddressed by the bodies that are supposed to be here to protect everybody. And as we've seen in the news lately as well, the very safety of our students is at stake. We've seen this at Berkeley, and nowadays, we're even seeing it in our backyard in Orange County. The OCC College Republicans have been targets of vandalism, abuse, threats, even death threats. Like, we have Antifa operating in Orange County now, and they've gotten access to OCC. And I think we've seen what they're capable of, and we can't exactly let this continue to be encouraged by the teachers' unions. And I don't know, when I was helping the OCC Republicans start up in the summer of 2015, I couldn't imagine having to explain to the young founders that this kind of unacceptable behaviors will be tolerated by their school. And I think it's up to each and every one of you sitting here to stand up for our students and their safety. As the trustees of this community college district, you need to make it clear that schools cannot discriminate based off political belief. Allowing them, allowing teachers to target students in the middle of class and ask them to out themselves whenever, because they happen to have different views, and open themselves up to abuse, it's frankly very outrageous and conduct unbecoming of a teacher that's supposed to have responsibility over students. And additionally, you need to remove these policies that aim to keep this problem of discrimination under wraps. Yes, we all know that there are PR interests in the school to try to say that everything's going okay, but as a public institution, the parents are sending their students to these schools, and the students who themselves choose to go there have a right to know what's going on in their classrooms. And to try to like keep that under wraps is misinforming the public, and frankly, it's, it lacks the transparency that should be required for a public institution, and I believe that is completely shameful. And lastly, you need to reset the faculty of the year award for Professor Olga Cox. And I heard the academic senators say that, say that we need, that, he explained the process, but if that's the case, and if they genuinely in their hearts feel that this is the right thing to do to reward her for this kind of award, then frankly, the award is worthless and belongs in the trash. And lastly, the public school should stand up for and protect all students, and as a trustee, every member of this board should recognize the trust that the supporters of the Coast Community College District place upon them. And I hopefully ask that instead of, instead of listening to the unions, that you listen to your community, and more importantly, you respect the dignity of all students on campus, and frankly, if that's too much to ask, then none of you are fit to represent the students. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the board, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Jan Gorison, I teach at Orange Coast College, and I'm actually gonna read an email that was written by my colleague, Dr. Gregory Russell. So I'm primarily here tonight because I'm concerned that the OCC Republican Club would like to see the district policies amend to protect students from discrimination as a result of their quote-unquote "political affiliation and ideological beliefs" statement. On the surface, this sounds innocuous, however, it can have unintended consequences. As a biologist, I deal with the world of facts and testable hypotheses. I try to teach my students the beauty of the scientific method, and that science is wholly objective. To my great dismay, our popular, I'm sorry, to my great dismay, our popular media has muddled the waters of science with catchy taglines such as "global warming, do you think it's really happening?", or stuff like, another one was "evolution, should we teach the controversy in our schools?" Well, the data tell us that global warming is unequivocally happening, and it's human cause, and there is no controversy at all surrounding evolution. Again, another fact. However, because our current political culture, it is unfortunate to have these become partisan issues. Now here's where it gets interesting. So it is conceivable that in one of my classes, I would say something like the following: "The theory of evolution tells us that we share a common ancestor with other primates."
Yeah, monkeys.
No, not monkeys, that showed, never mind. Multiple lines of evidence support this statement, it is in effect fact. However, it is possible that a student or someone in the audience may disagree with my statement based on his or her own beliefs. And the language, that if the language that the OCC Republicans is promoting is put into place, that could make my statement... that could make my statement a violation of a student's ideological or even political beliefs. In effect, it would, it could, or looking at it another way, the language could, would put my statement out of evolution, I'm sorry. This, the language would put my statement about evolution on the same level as either racist or sexist statements. So if we were to incorporate the seemingly harmless language every night in our college policy, it will undermine the autonomy of higher education here at the Coast College District and it will lead to censorship by professors who are afraid of quote-unquote "getting into trouble" simply for teaching their subject matter. The quality of education and scholarship in the Coast District would suffer as a result. Therefore, I humbly ask you not to entertain this request, written by Gregory Russell. Thank you.
Rory Doni and Jessica Riestra.
A global minimum caused the Ice Age.
My name is Rory. I'm a student who came before you, specifically relocated all the way to LA in order to undertake a travel and tourism program that this school specialized in. When I first arrived here, I was of the impression that this would be opening doors to my dream career, that this would be a community that would foster my development as a human being, not just terms of politically, but also personally. And ever since I landed here without controversy, I have encountered incredible amount of violence. I did not imagine that, not even reaching midterms at this point, that I would have to be escorted as a conservative student by campus safety to my classrooms because of violence that has been directed towards me with the blessing of faculty members. So I must stress that giving Olga this award has opened the floodgates to even more oppression, up to the point where even consulting a local police officer is now with the question of, oh, was it a, was it, was it all about politics? Is that the sort of reputation that the school wants to have? A place that is not acting in the interest of student's safety, even for those who might have an opinion that's different from that of faculty members. It is true Professor Cox is entitled to her opinion, but to actually use taxpayer dollars, to use taxpayer time to proselytize, to label students with differing opinions as terrorists, and to see the sort of legacy that it has now created a few months later. Take a look at who is actually being terrorized as a result of that. And I'm not just talking physically and verbally, such as the acts of vandalism that happened on campus recently, but also spiritually, emotionally, morally. Is this what we really want at an educational institution? At an institution that prides itself on building students up instead to beat them down in every form imaginable? I have sacrificed tremendously to come to this school, not just in leaving my home and my comfort zone behind, but I have also sacrificed in terms of time. I have sacrificed financially. I did not do it for this level of abuse. I did not do it for this level of oppression. And giving Professor Cox this award, this is continuing to enable this sort of conduct. I will, will not stand for that. I do not think that the taxpayer and public who is funding this school will stand for it either. So I am pleading you to please consider the students in this case. Get back to your roots at this being a community that will foster free thought. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. It's a pleasure to be standing in front of you. Today's discussion that I want to be talking about will be in regards to Olga Perez Cox being chosen as Faculty Member of the Year. Today, I am here to address one more of that in spread. I want to begin expressing that I will see students in the decision-making process of choosing Faculty Member of the Year, Part-Time Faculty Member of the Year, and Classified Staff. Last year, when this whole process began opening, a faculty member went to our, during our 74 meetings, she addressed that this was an opportunity for a student to be able to vocalize students' concerns by voting who they choose would be the most appropriate person to be with a nominee in this process. And no one participated in this whole process. Furthermore, during December, well, I would like to say that I was the student that was chosen to be part of this whole nomination process in choosing these three members. With that in mind, during our December meeting, I specifically addressed that we had extended the deadline in regards to appointing, or nominating the person that we felt would be the most qualified person to be able to take part in this decision-making process. Once again, no one did. With that in mind, I want to say that, well, saying what I've been qualified in my beliefs that I was, last year, ICC president and where I oversaw over 70 clubs. I am the current Vice President of Communications at half-sat in most PGCs in my campus, District Consultation Council, Board of Policies and Procedures, DCC, DSC, Measure M, over like eight clubs and President of two clubs. So I think I pretty know, I know my campus, I would like to say, because I try to be as involved, as much involved as possible. With that in mind, I also been in the student government and GWC, so I've seen the differences of how different campuses work. With that in mind, I like to believe that I have always done what's best to represent the students. With that said, the process involved two things. One was the nomination process and in the other process, the person that was nominated said why they felt that they deserved to be able to get that award. With that in mind, when we chose the person, this has been a process that has been occurring throughout years. It's not something new, however, it's only been, there has been no complaints until this year. With that said, the group scores, the group scores on each application with like the highest amount of score, the person that received the highest amount of score was the person that was nominated. Throughout the whole process, Olga Perez received the highest score. And with that in mind, she received it due to her passion, due to her dedication, her love towards her 40-plus years of teaching, made her the most qualified candidate to be able to be nominated for, to be able to be nominated for this position. And if there was any concerns in regards to this nomination process, someone should have addressed this when the applications were open. And now discussing the other process, which is the Board of Policies and Procedures, and talking about terrorism, or talking about how students should be able to have their voice represented. There's been so many clubs within our campus that have been attacked and been harassed and have feared coming into these meetings because they felt that they're being targeted due to the difference of beliefs. And so many students that have come crying and they have tried to meet with as many different people as possible to try and express themselves, but they have not felt like they're being heard. I am here to represent every single one of the students, to show the different side. Yes. I agree that we should be able to be in a concurrence where both sides should be working with one another and where both sides should have their free speech to listen to what each side believes upon. And the side that I am here to represent is that they felt that they have felt attacked and that they have felt that they have not been heard due to everything that has been occurring within campus. As many of you know, there's been newspapers and there's been issues that have showed that there has been target staff, where we have seen members of the Republican Club, where they have been going to their individual meetings and how students within their individual meetings have felt like so terrified of having certain students. Why? Because they have specifically, whether on social media or whether in class, been able to question them in regards to everything that they believed in. Thank you for your consideration. With that said, those students are not here today because, due to that aspect of being fearful of being in a room where they just feel that they're just gonna be targeted and they feel that they're gonna be harassed at any second. Thank you for your time.
Next three.
Hello once again. My name's Elias Almirano. And just before I begin, I would like to ask you a question. A question that was asked by the Peace Seeker Vincent Wetzel, President of the Republican Club, during an icebreaker activity during their meeting. Ready? If you could wipe out a group of people and multiply another one, which one would they be? You can't, you're not allowed to say Democrats or Liberals. You don't need to answer that, I just wanted to give you an idea about the sort of thoughts that run inside this kid's head. Anyway, I'm here to defend and stand with Professor Olga Cox and support the more than just decision made by the faculty of OCC to name Olga Cox Faculty Member of the Year. Despite the threats to her life, the constant mockery and insults posted in the club's Facebook page by people who have no idea who she is, and despite the intimidation by Vincent, who enrolled in her classes a semester simply to monitor her, Professor Cox had the admirable courage to not let a few students ruin her commitment to this institution, her dedication to continue teaching, and her passion for helping hundreds of students like she has done for over 30 years. In light of this, the actions of the Republican Club continue to astonish me, for it has had an effect on how people perceive a person they do not know. Ignorance is the root of all evil and the fact that there are many of here today attacking a person who they've never met is extremely tragic. In fact, many people I know believed... In fact, many people I know believed, adopted, and went into her class in the beginning of this semester with the unstable, evil, repulsive, and abusive image of Cox that the Republicans manufactured. However, it only took one class for my friends to see the falsehood of this preposterous allegations. Another note, Joshua said that Olga does not represent OCC in Fox News. However, that is coming from a guy who received over 300 signatures of students that wanted him out of student government in a petition that my friends and I composed because they all strongly disapproved of his representation. And also from someone whose many friends only expressed their disappointment and shame towards what he's currently causing at OCC. In fact, yesterday, since only yesterday, I have gathered over 50 signatures in a few hours from students who believe she deserves recognition, which appreciate the statements of Joshua said on national television. I love this school and the faculty has been nothing but a great support to me. I won't let someone's crave for attention and a political platform to ruin this institution I consider home. Thank you.
I'll tell you what, we, we have, there's some other business to do, but we do have space at the end of the meeting for, I'll make a comment. We've always had that. And you're welcome to say for that, but we do need to get some business done, see?
I counted 12 left.